At this time I'd like to call into session the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee of a meeting of Wednesday, March the fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. We do have a published agenda, but due to the fact that we don't have a quorum tonight, we are going to do some of the presentations that are here. We just are not going to be able to take any action on any minutes or anything that needs to have a vote. If at any time we get a member that shows up and gives a quorum, then we may be stopping a presentation so we could go into the public hearing for the FY eighteen budget if that's okay with members. Okay? So, the first item that we have on our agenda, we're going to go down to new business. We're going to pass over the report from the Audit Subcommittee and go on to the Fine and Performing Arts Department presentation.
I'm going to throw this to Mr. Mead. To introduce this department.
Thank you. It would be my pleasure to introduce this month's feature event for our committee, the Fine and Performing Arts. This is Amy Collins, Department Chair, and Amy has a few things to show us visually and then also we have some students with us who will be performing later on. So, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure to be able to share the wonderful things we have going on in our department. I appreciate the opportunity. So, at Algonquin, we offer a very comprehensive program in the areas of art, drama, and music. And our students have thirty-four different course offerings available to them, so there's truly something for everybody. All of our courses are electives and the graduation requirement is either two and a half credits from our department or from the Applied Arts and Technology Department. So, we are currently in the middle of the course selection process at Algonquin and, as you can imagine, as a completely elective department, it's a little bit of a stressful time for us. We have spent a great deal of time advocating for our courses and discussing the benefits of making the room in your schedule to take an arts course. After countless discussions with students and parents, it has shown us that many students are concerned that they must load their schedule with very academic courses and when doing that, they're eliminating the room in their schedule to take an arts course. This is obviously very troubling to us as their teachers to have students drop something that they are passionate about or something that they're talented in or something that relieves stress and pressure in their lives and something that makes them unique individuals. So, we've been working closely with the guidance counselors who have been doing a great job, working with students and families on creating a balanced schedule. And this quote up here from Stanford, "A mission should remind students that the curriculum they choose should be one that challenges them, but also one that inspires them and helps them develop their unique passions." We actually have a current senior at Algonquin who'll be attending Stanford next year who has made room in his schedule to take three ceramic courses at Algonquin. Our two honor societies at Algonquin, the National Art Honor Society and the Triumph Music Society, have created campaigns encouraging their peers to make room for arts during the course selection process. Students have created posters such as this one, which are currently hung up around the school. And also, in our latest edition of the APTO newsletter, Paul DiDomenico, our Assistant Principal, wrote a wonderful article talking about our offerings and reminding students and parents to consider all the opportunities that they have. So, we really appreciate the shout-out from Paul. So, tonight you'll hear from a few students about our programs and how they have affected their lives at Algonquin. So, as our students work in the arts, they develop self-discipline, self-esteem, persistence, motivation, and throughout all of our programs, students can explore, express, and understand thoughts, emotions, and feelings. We strongly feel that however one participates in the arts, they're a great source of enjoyment and they can contribute significantly to one's quality of life and emotional well-being. Our students are provided with several opportunities to perform at the school or in the community, collaborate with area schools and musicians, participate in festivals in Massachusetts and beyond. Our staff and students are always willing to share their time and talents with the towns of Northborough and Southborough through attendance at Rotary Pancake Breakfast, Veterans' Day activities, Memorial Day activities, art shows in the community, athletic events, open invitations to performances here at our school. Currently, our art students have an exhibit on display at the Northborough Public Library with an opening reception this coming Monday, March twentieth, from six-thirty to eight, and our art students will be present at the open reception to talk to any attendees. Two weeks ago, we held our annual Jazz Night. We do this every year and we invite a special guest in to work with our high school jazz groups and with the jazz groups down at Trotter and Melican in the evening culminates with a concert at Algonquin. Our guest this year was Christine Fawson. She is a vocalist and trumpet player and she's a faculty member at Berklee College of Music. She's performed internationally with the Diva Jazz Orchestra and the R and B group Bean Town, performing alongside Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, Lionel Richie, and now, of course, our Northborough and Southborough students. So, a little bit more detail about our art program. So, our art program offers a wide variety of diverse offerings in two-D and three-D art, as you can see on the slide, and we are proud to offer art courses at the CP honors and AP levels, truly providing something for everyone, from the beginning artist or hobbyist to the potential art major. Our art students have been very successful in recent area competitions and honors such as the Congressional District Art Competition and the Globe Scholastic Awards. This year at the Globe Scholastic Awards, our students were awarded one gold key, four silver keys, and eight honorable mentions. And I just found out today that one of our students who received a gold key at the regional level moved on to the national competition and she was awarded with a silver medal at that competition. And her name is Nadine Elmazur and she's a junior. You're going to see one of her paintings in just a moment. So, these were my personal favorites that were selected for the Globe Scholastic. Do you recognize that? And I love that one. And this is Nadine's that was selected for the national competition and it is titled... Got to find it. Where'd it go? Floral Mind. So, beautiful work. Does anyone recognize that? So, our dedicated staff also, our three art teachers, offer a lot of their time outside of the classroom through extended learning opportunities for our students, and this is just one of the major projects we had going on recently at the school. This was done by the National Art Honor Society under the direction of Michelle Shepherd. She received a grant from the Southborough Ed Foundation to bring in a professional artist, Jennifer Swan, to work with the students to create this mural. Nearly thirty students participated in the project and it was spent over the time span of nine months creating the... from sketching the process, discussing it, creating it, and actually putting it together on the wall. Many of the ideas in sketching sessions were led by students and the final theme was breaking boundaries, painted in Trump Lloyd's style, to which a real surface appears to be broken by the painting, opening up to a new space beyond the plane. And there it is. I'd now like to invite Antonio Montilla, an art student here at Algonquin, to present some of his work, which you'll see up here in the front, and to talk to you a little bit about being an artist at Algonquin. Antonio?
Hello. My name is Antonio Montilla. I am a senior at Algonquin and I have had the pleasure of being able to take part in numerous of our art courses with all three of our art teachers and I've participated in Art One, Art Two, Advanced Art One, Advanced Art Two, ceramics, AP art, and I'm currently in digital art. And when I was young, my dream was to be a Disney animator and I think that with the help of the school board and just everyone at the school that I've been able to achieve my dream. I recently got accepted to Ringling College. It's an art school and it's one of the best art schools for animation in the country and I don't think I'd be there without the school board. So, when I started out, when I first came to Algonquin, I'd love to do cartoons, like draw things from, you know, things I watch on TV. But then, as I got older, my teachers really challenged me to, you know, try to expand like my mediums and my style. So, then I learned that I also love working with hands and, you know, doing figure drawings. So, now that also inspired me to do, or to pursue, a career in medical illustration and use some of my works. I like doing a lot of hands and some wacky poses and I think that like a lot of the teachers, like Mr. Hanson, he really challenges me to like look deeper and beyond what I see and really look at the fine details of everything and I don't think that I'd be where I am today without him. And Ms. DeCiro, she... I took ceramics with her and she really taught me how to work in a three-dimensional plane other than my classic two-dimensional art. And then, Ms. Shepherd, I think she's really helping me the most right now because I never really thought about using art technologically. I take digital art with her and, you know, technology, I know there's a lot of technology now, but technological drawing like Photoshop is pretty difficult for me and I'm really going to need it in my field for animation and she's been a huge help for me and I wouldn't be where I am with her, without her either.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
So, Antonio mentioned digital arts. That is a new course that we're offering this year, which we're thrilled about. It's a class that's open to students in grades nine through twelve and students can opt to take it at the CP or the honors level. So, there's a true mix of all types of students and learners in the course. And the course attracts a lot of different kids, kids who might be interested in code and building computers and might not have taken an art class before, so it provides a new entry point into visual art. And even Ms. Shepherd tells me that there are some children in there who are technology-phobic as well that are taking the class because they're more art-based and they're learning to use technology similar to Antonio for their art. These are just some of the images and you can see some more behind me as well of the pieces that the students created this past fall using Adobe Photoshop and Illustrator. I think they're really cool. Some more over here. So, we're going to move on to drama now and to start us off with the drama portion of the presentation, I'd like to welcome Drew DePree and Danny Piccolo. I think they spoke to some of you already. They thought that was a school committee meeting when they were in here earlier, but they're back for round two.
We're back, baby.
There we are. All right.
I'll take this side.
All right. Sweet. We'll do a two-sided thing here.
We're not as talented as Antonio over there. We just play make-believe in a black box. That's all we do.
Yeah, that's what we do. So, Drew DePree, I'm a senior here. This is Danny, also a senior.
I'm a senior, yes.
Want to start it off, Danny?
Yeah, I'll tell you guys my story, you know, maybe I'll do it again for you guys that heard it the first time. But, yeah, so my story is freshman sophomore year, I had a, you know, I wasn't, kind of hated school, only wanted to do my time and get out, you know what I mean? Kind of like jail.
It's not as funny as the second time.
Not as funny, no. Anyways, yeah, and then junior year, you know, I really wanted to feel a part of the community here at Algonquin and started making some new friends and then I saw one of the friends that I, that was new and I was like, hey, what are you doing? You know, I was in school waiting for my mom to pick me up late, late one night and I saw him walking by with a blizzard from Dairy Queens and I was like, what are you doing and why are you eating ice cream? You know, it's kind of winter time, but whatever. And he's like, oh, I'm doing improv. And I was like, well, I'm gonna follow you, you know, I don't have anything better to do. So, snuck into the black box, you know, watched my boy Drew DePree here do his magic up on stage and I felt hooked, man, and, you know, Ms. Morrison actually put me up on stage and she's like, hey Danny, why don't you go up? And I went up, did terrible, but she saw something in me that no one else did and been a part of drama ever since.
Ever since.
Ever since.
Yeah, we were like, yeah, Danny, I guess we'll take you. Like, you're here.
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, why not?
But, no, improv is like a really great thing here at this school. I told you all this before, but this is a really, where we're a really accepting community. Anybody can come in and try it. Anybody can be good at it. Some people aren't, but everybody, everybody has an equal chance. And my story's kind of similar to Danny's. I wasn't struggling in school, but I was struggling personally in my personal life. And I started taking drama in the beginning of my junior year and one day, Ms. Morrison just pulled me aside after a month and was like, hey, how about you come tonight? How about you come to our meeting tonight and maybe you could be in our show because I think, like, I see something in you, like, you can be, you could be something more than just a Drama One student. And I thought that was something, that was something that really, it brought me in part of a team, it brought me as part of a community. And I've been doing improv ever since, since junior year.
I don't know how.
And I'm also considering in doing some, drama's inspired me to keep some element of that in my life moving forward. I strongly consider going to Ithaca for sports media and directing and directing something I really never would have even, that never would have crossed my mind if I hadn't taken drama and I'm really just grateful for that opportunity. And if I could just read a piece for my college essay, it's not that long, just to really give you inward, in a more cohesive thought process than I can just say to you.
Nice vocab, Drew.
Thanks, thanks.
Really good.
Improv gave me the ability to make myself happy every day and forget about everything else. It gives me so much more than internal satisfaction as well. Socially, I developed in a majorly positive way. I'm a completely different person now than I was when I entered high school because of drama. As the final days of high school are approaching, I spend a lot of time reflecting on who I used to be and about the experiences that got me to where I am today. Entering high school, I felt isolated and underappreciated. However, as I prepare myself for graduation, I've developed numerous new friendships and find myself smiling more than I ever had. And that's what really drama's about. It's about making you feel something. And that's all we got for you.
And if you guys want to see more of us, you know, you probably don't, but anyways, tomorrow in the Black Box, we'll be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Seven.
At seven o'clock in the Black Box. Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks.
Hope you have a good night.
So, yes, like Drew and Danny mentioned, this year's winter play opens tomorrow night. It's under the direction of drama teacher Mara Morrison. Sixty kids auditioned for the cast after the success of last year's improv show and twenty-six were cast. They've been working since October every Thursday night on improv. Many of the casts are new to performing, but they've all taken drama and/or public speaking. There are many returning cast members from last year's show who have been instrumental in showing leadership and being role models and it should be noted that three students are captains of winter sports teams, all winning seasons, and were, they made it to every rehearsal. They didn't miss any rehearsals. The show is titled Homemade Theater, which reflects the improv-to-sketch format of improv asylum, improv Boston, and Second City. The cast of the Algonquin Show went to an improv asylum show in Boston last fall. The show is a student-centered undertaking and the awesome art students of Mr. George Hanson sketched and painted a fantastic mural that will surround the students. And the poster that you see here was painted by art student Bridging McGlinn with text assistance by art teacher Danielle DeCiro.
Miss Fawson, can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Something that we looked at was about Ms. Morrison and she really puts a lot of time and effort into making the show the best it can be and we really wouldn't be anywhere where we are without her. And I just want to make sure that you guys all know that.
Absolutely. Like, today we spent five hours just practicing and rehearsing and we know that Morrison lives, what, forty minutes away, so... And that's not only today, like, since October, she's been, you know...
Including last year and we did a show in the summer too and she was, she's here and she's willing to consistently put our time in for us and we're very grateful for that. We just want to make sure you all know that because you don't see that as much as we do.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Morrison told me at the end of the school year last year that the students who were involved in the show last year asked her, well, can we keep doing this over the summer? And she couldn't say no to them and she came in over the summer and worked with the students. They did like a summer camp?
Yeah.
We did a haunted theater camp.
Yeah.
So, yeah. If you want to watch it, it's on Northborough Cable, both of our shows from last year.
Great. Thank you. So, on to the music program. So, in the music program, we are very fortunate to be able to offer eight performing ensembles during the school day, four choral groups, and four instrumental groups. Additionally, we offer a half-year advanced jazz improv workshop and a half-year music theory and a full-year AP music theory course. Our students are challenged with demanding repertoire of all genres of music and we continue to take our students to festivals and guest performances off-campus. We continue to have a great deal of success with the AP music theory program where our students are performing well above the national average. Last year, we added two new courses. Well, last year we added beginning guitar and this year we added beginning piano, which I am really thrilled about and most proud of. These courses are designed so that any student can have a performance-based music in their school day. So, the way our program was set before, our performing ensembles were band, orchestra, and chorus. Students had to have been involved pretty much in music since elementary school. So, we were kind of not catering to everybody in that we were kind of closing out a broad audience of students. So, the addition of these courses has allowed, again, anyone to take grades nine through twelve, no, little to no music experience and come in and perform during the school day on guitar or piano. And many of our students probably took a general music class in middle school and learned how to read some music but never had the chance to apply that to performance. So, that is something I'm really proud of that we're having that opportunity for students during our school day. And I should note that Catherine Waters, our choral teacher and beginning piano teacher, received a grant from the Northborough Ed Foundation to purchase the keyboards and headphones to get the beginning piano class started and you can see some of them right Before I wrap up, I'd like to invite one more student up. We have Ms. Christina Iverson. She just returned from Symphony Hall this past weekend. She was a member of the All-State Music Festival where she performed on viola with the orchestra and she's going to play something for you. Sure, talk first.
Okay, so, I'm Christina Iverson. I'm a junior here at Algonquin and I've kind of, music has kind of always been a part of my life. Like, I've gone to church every Sunday and we've always sang there. I started playing piano in second grade. I started on violin in third grade and then two years ago, I switched to the viola and I just think my life would be so much different and so much worse without music. When I went to middle school, I couldn't really participate in orchestra all three years, but then I moved here to Algonquin and the orchestra here has been just so amazing. Ms. Collins makes orchestra so fun. It's my favorite class of the day and I look forward to going there every day. I also play in out-of-school, in the NEC Youth Philharmonic Orchestra out of school and as Ms. Collins said, I just came back from Allstate and I think there's really nothing that can kind of replace the arts and especially music for me. I feel like I have like such a sense of camaraderie and friendship between me and the other students in orchestra and I feel like in music and you really make connections with people that can't really be made in other ways, like, you make connections with them through the music and I feel like I just like don't feel like, feel that anywhere else.
I should tell you that Christina had to, she's a state finalist in DECA.
Yeah.
Which is the same weekend, this past weekend, as Allstate. So, she had the tough choice of deciding between the two. And then, when we were at the Allstate Music Festival, DECA was there too.
The same time, yeah.
We were in the same place.
Yeah.
So, we saw all the DECA people.
So, I'm going to be playing for you the Schubert arpeggione sonata in A minor.
She volunteered to play viola. 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 All right, so, up here you can see, this list is always growing, but these are what we do outside of the classroom, outside of the school day with our students. So, we continue to participate, like I said, in many festivals to receive feedback from professional musicians and educators. Participating in these festivals allow our students to hear performances by their peers at other schools and from oftentimes collegiate groups and experience a wide variety of musical literature. This year, we were pleased to have twenty-four students from Algonquin selected to participate in the Central District Honors Festival with a concert at Mechanics Hall in Worcester and then six students, Christina was one of them, to perform at the Allstate Music Festival with a concert at Symphony Hall. Just last week, here at Algonquin, we hosted the MAJE Jazz Festival where both of our jazz bands participated and received silver medals. Last year, the Jazz One Band received a gold medal at the state MAJE finals and performed at the Hatch Shell in Boston for the third year in a row. In this past weekend, our jazz choir, this is, it's a busy month, March, this past weekend, the jazz choir participated in the UNH Jazz Festival and were selected as the top honor and recognition as the outstanding choir. Just two days ago, in March, we held an acapella night here with some special guests. We had a couple of area high school groups come and perform alongside two of our high school acapella groups with some very special guests. We had the University of Rochester Yellow Jackets come and perform and do a workshop with our students. They are a very prestigious collegiate acapella choir. They perform internationally and were recently on the NBC show, The Sing-Off. We happen to have an alumni in the group. Scott Abrams, class of two thousand and fourteen, is a member of the group and he was integral in bringing the group here to perform with our students, but he was very eager to bring them back to Algonquin to show his friends at Rochester and then the students here where he got to start singing acapella music. So, our curricular ensembles continue to participate in MICA festival and in two thousand and fifteen, we had a trifecta of gold medals where our string orchestra, symphonic band, and wind ensemble were all invited to perform at Symphony Hall as part of the gold medal showcase. And it was an amazing performance and a thrill for Eric Vincent and myself to be able to conduct onstage at Symphony Hall and to have our students experience such a magnificent atmosphere and performance venue. We were so lucky. And it was so exciting for me to, when I asked my students, you know, so who's been to Symphony Hall before? And I was surprised to see that not many of them had and I said, well, how lucky are you? The first time you ever get to go to Symphony Hall, you're going to get the best seat in the house and you're going to perform onstage in front of your friends and families and supportive musicians from across Massachusetts. It was just such a thrill. I still think about it fondly and I think our students do as well. So, that's it. That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I appreciate, again, the opportunity to come and share a little bit about the program with you all. Paul?
Well, it was terrific first. First and foremost, it was just terrific. It's always been, you know, the art... It's always been, the arts here has always been a big deal. We ask every presenter in all these meetings when they come, from a budgeting point of view, are you getting what you need? Do you have to turn away kids that are trying to enroll in classes that you just can't fit them? Now, what is, how does that all stand in your particular world?
I think budgeting, we are feeling very supported in that we are doing well in that aspect. We could always use the money, I suppose, for our equipment, especially, I'm thinking ahead, that beginning piano class. If that succeeds, like I hope and think it will, down the road, I can envision we'd need to invest some money in that. Because right now, we have those keyboards that the students are taking out every class and, you know, putting on a stand and then putting them away. A true piano course like that would really require, to be most effective, a piano lab. I did put that in my proposal for my five-year budget plan down the road, but that was just a projection because, again, this is our first year doing the class, so I have to see how successful the program is. But otherwise, I feel very supported and very fortunate budget-wise.
And we're not turning down a lot of kids that are trying to...
We are not. Because like I said, for us, being elective, the concern more is getting students into the class, really. Because students, we have so many elective opportunities at Algonquin, which is a wonderful thing. But I feel students are often torn between which elective to take because there are only so many slots in their schedule. I wish more students would make room for the arts in their schedule. Yes?
No, I think it's true if you started a new program for kids that, you know, beginning and they might have missed out on, or, as my son once said, "It's for the good of the band that he quit." But the only thing to do is to play, you know, guitar or something where, you know, where you don't have to worry about, you know, the good of the band, say, and just learn for yourself. But, no, I think it's terrific about bringing, you know, bringing it, really opening up and also with the improv and the drama, you know, the opportunity for kids to get involved in the arts and so important, you know, especially as, like, on other levels. It's, you know, people are not recognizing the importance and I'm, and we always do here and I'm glad that you're instituting things to broaden it to other kids so they can feel like they can participate as well.
Thank you.
And Amy, I'd like to say thank you for the wonderful presentation. Also, the student ambassadors, we heard so many wonderful things, from the drama to the art, to the animation, to the musical performance. And it was nice to hear the student ambassadors, how they were talking so much about their teachers and the faculty members and that they realize how much time, you know, a super teacher spends, which is over and above, but they do it for the love of you guys. And it's also nice to hear that music, any extra things that the kids do also helps them to make a better, well-wanted person. But for hearing from the young gentleman in improv, how that brought them back into school was just very wonderful to hear. And I'm sure that there's other students like them in the past and in the future that will feel the same way. And you're very passionate about all the things you're doing. You're going to be a wonderful ambassador of Algonquin as you go up and come back in future years and come back to your classes just as the acapella student did. But thank you, Amy. And I know all the, this is just a sampling of the wonderful things that happened here. But as Paul said, if there's anything that we can do, I know that budgets are always tight, but fabulous for what you're doing and the excitement that you have for the students also and your love for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now that, we're going to go back to our agenda. We're going to go back to the first item that we have because we now have a quorum. And so, I think that we will go back to, if it's okay for everybody, we're going to go back to the public hearing. Christine?
That's...
Okay, we'll go back to the public hearing for the FY 2018 budget.
Okay, thank you. The FY 2018 approved budget will be read this evening as in, consistent with past practice, into the record by identifying the proposed budget allocated by Fund Code. A copy of the line item budget is included in the packet. And once the budget is read, the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will undertake questions, close the public hearing, and move to the next agenda item. So, this is the public hearing on the FY 2018 operational budget. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee is committed to providing an excellent education to the youth of the two towns in a cost-effective manner. It commits to a strong cooperative working relationship with other parts of the town governments and the development of the school budget. And the involvement of parents and community continues to be an important part of the process as active partners with the school. The budget priorities and the mission of the Regional School Committee serve as guiding principles by creating a framework for discussions and decisions taking place throughout the budget process. Each year, the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee identifies its budget priorities. These priorities become the guiding budgeting areas of focus and are included in the public hearing document. A copy of the FY 2018 School Committee voted and approved line item budget is available this evening on our district website at central and town offices. As part of the public hearing this evening, I will be providing the total of the FY 2018 budget by financial categories of expenditures as identified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Function 1,000, district leadership and administration includes the regional schools districts, apportionment of general administration, district administration, finance, and administrative services, $628,305. Function 2,000, instructional services includes district-wide academic leadership, school building leadership, teaching services, professional development for teachers, and support staff, instructional materials and equipment, instructional technology, guidance, counseling, and testing services and assessment, as well as psychological services, $10,582,115. Function 3,000 includes other student services, which includes attendance and parent liaison services, health services, student transportation services, food services, athletic services, student activities, and school security, $1,417,182. The total amount budgeted for student body activities is $116,000. This budget is offset by anticipated student activity fees totaling $50,000. Fund Code 3500, 3,500, athletic services includes transportation, athletic salaries and services as well as salaries for officials, $484,890. The total athletic budget is $781,690. The total cost of the athletic budget is offset by gate receipts and student user fees in the amount of $296,800 or approximately 37.96% of the operational cost of the athletic services budget. Function 1,000, operation and maintenance of plants, estodial services, heating of buildings, utility services, maintenance of grounds, maintenance of buildings, food services, maintenance, networking, and telecommunications for infrastructure, $1,667,507. And the total cost of the maintenance of grounds represented in that number is $145,000, which does include an offset of $70,000 from parking fee revenues. And the total cost of routine building repairs represented in the number is $193,000, which includes an offset of $10,000 from facilities rentals. Function 5,000 includes fixed charges. These fixed charges are employment, retirement, employee separation costs, insurance programs including health, life, workers' compensation, unemployment, and comprehensive liability and bond insurance, Medicare, rental and/or lease of equipment, and other charges which are recurrent in nature such as municipal inspections, $3,686,120. Function 7,000 includes acquisition of improvement and replacement of assets of a fixed, non-instructional nature exceeding $5,000 in unit cost and $100,000 for extraordinary maintenance, $110,200. Function 9,000 includes programs with other school districts, including the transfer of payments to other school districts or to non-public schools for services provided to students residing in the sending city or town, otherwise known oftentimes as school choice and charter school tuition. Amount in the FY 2018 budget is $290,000. Contractual obligations this year represents the ongoing negotiations with our various associations and the amount represented in the FY 2018 budget for those anticipated increased costs, $539,722. All of these Fund Code classifications are repeated again as part of the special education portion of the FY 2018 budget. Now, I'll read them by Fund Code. The definitions are the same as described previously. Fund Code 1,000, $9,300. Fund Code 2,000, instruction, $2,154,530. Function 300, other student services, $251,280. Function 4,000, maintenance of equipment, $2,000. Function 5,000, fixed charges, $1,595. Function 9,000, programs for non-public schools, $479,720. It's important to note that the total amount of this account by Fund Code is actually $686,133 and it is offset by a $206,413 circuit breaker funding reimbursement. Total FY 2018 operational budget is $22,304,466. This represents an overall increase of $816,541 or a percentage increase over FY 2017 operational budget of 3.80%. That concludes the reading of the public hearing.
So, at this time, we will ask the audience if anyone is there, they have any questions or comments since this is a public hearing. Seeing that there is none, school community members, if you have any questions further down in the, further down in the agenda, we will, we will entertain those questions. Okay? Okay? All right, so we're going to go back to our agenda and, oh, this time I'd like to close the public hearing for the FY 2018 budget. Going back to the action of the minutes, we have four in your packet that need to be approved. Is there a motion? Paul?
Do you want to try and do them all at once or...
Yeah, sure.
So, I would move that we vote to approve and release the executive session minutes of February 24, 2016, and we vote to approve the open meeting minutes of January 18, 2017, and we vote to approve and retain the executive session minutes of January 18, 2017, and that we vote to approve the special open meeting minutes of February 23, 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Patty?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item that we have is educational policy. We have none at this time. Are we still, Superintendent Johnson, we're still going to bypass the audit subcommittee?
Well, we have a quorum. We could take it up for consideration this evening or move it to next month's agenda.
Okay. Lynn's on the committee and she said she'd be willing to do it.
Well, I mean, I actually wasn't at the meeting, so...
Oh.
But I was just thinking we should maybe just want to do it now.
Do it now? Okay. Let's do it.
Well, how long is it going to take? Just a few minutes? Okay.
So, the audit subcommittee met on February 13, 2017, and reviewed the draft of the FY 2016 audit provided to us by Tom Scanlon of Scanlon Associates. He, in fact, was present to review the draft with the audit subcommittee. And Scanlon of Associates is the district's auditing firm. This is the second year that he has conducted the audit in the district. He attended the meeting and, again, reviewed all the documents with the audit subcommittee. Each member was subsequently received a copy of the final document. It was reported by Tom Scanlon that there were no significant findings and that was so represented in his management summary report. And he did certify that our financial accounts are current, accurate, and fiscally sound. I know there were a number of members here that attended that subcommittee and...
Paul?
I mean, yeah, I was there and I'm a member of that subcommittee. A couple of things of note, maybe, that the committee would be interested in. We talked a lot to Tom about, you know, the mechanisms of maybe beginning to build a fund of money to deal with our OPEB obligations and he was pretty knowledgeable about the issue. He talked to us a lot about it and talked about what sort of language we could be able to put into like this coming budget. Although we didn't have a particular line item to fund it, it was one of those things where towards the end of the year, if we have excess and, you know, E and D money to spend, we could possibly begin to kind of prime the pump, so to speak. And, you know, I think he was going to work something out with Cheryl to just kind of figure out how that all would happen. But I thought it all went pretty good. Then we talked a little bit about, you know, this is his first full year post the embezzlement issue and he felt like the, I'd say, a couple of things. Number one, he, as the new auditor, he was already asking questions last year when we uncovered the problem that we had. And it was pretty clear that he would have found it if, you know, with a little more time on his own devices, even though he was brand-new to the system. And secondly, I think he was very comfortable that the processes and procedures that we have in place were, you know, were such that he was pretty comfortable with it and gave me comfort anyway that, you know, looked like we were in good shape in that, in that whole space going forward. And I thought that was, those are pretty specific sort of things that we pushed him on a little bit and thought it went well.
I think it's also important to note, as Mr. Buckett pointed out, that the discussions had taken place at the time that we uncovered the embezzlement. And many conversations took place with respect to the impact of that on the FY 2016 budget. And at that time, we did report that from all determinations and review by a forensic auditor and also by our auditing firm, Scanlon Associates, that there would be, there was no fiscal and financial detriment reflected in the FY 2016 budget. And certainly with the recovery of all the funds, with the help of good work by a lot of people and the fact that we were fully insured in each of the three districts, it was validating to, again, hear that, in fact, there was no impact on the FY 2016 budget. Therefore, it was closed and the FY 2017 budget, again, had no detrimental impact because of the embezzlement. So, I know that that's been an ongoing question and I think it's been really proven, again, through the audit process that that, in fact, is an accurate statement and it's well recorded in our financial analysis and our financial statements. So, I think that's important to note going into the FY 2017 end-of-the-year process and so forth. So, from my perspective as superintendent, I have found this auditing firm to be very transparent, very forthcoming with assistance, numerous, I know Cheryl has worked closely with them in her capacity as financial director, but it's also reassuring for me as superintendent to know I can pick up the phone and ask him some questions. And that has, you know, taken place over the last year, for sure, and it continues. With respect to OPEB, it is our intent to have Christine Tagg, the district treasurer, provide us with the language for creating that line item in the budget in April. She's working hard at trying to make sure that we have the right language and one of the reasons we've asked her to come to the regional meeting next month is for that sole purpose. And hopefully, we're going to get to that mark, but that is, that is the plan. And how we fund it is, you know, an ongoing conversation that will involve a lot of input from a lot of folks. So, it's been a well-vetted and very transparent process through this whole audit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Going on to the next item that we have is the update on the principal search.
Do you generally vote to accept the audit?
Oh, just as a matter of record?
Yeah, we have to vote to accept the audit.
Oh, to accept the audit? Okay. So, we need to have a vote to accept the audit. Paul?
So, I would move that the committee accepts the audit provided by Scanlon Associates for the fiscal year ending 2016.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion on the table? And it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. And now, on the update on the principal search. And now on the update on the principal search.
Just a quick update this evening, we will be having more conversations as we move forward. I'd first like to thank the members of the principal search committee and certainly Greg Martino, Assistant Superintendent for his outstanding leadership in, in conducting the search in such a professional and thorough manner. We did have 34, I just hid the, covered the document that I had, 34 applicants. We had three, 34 applicants in our first, 24 applicants. It helps to put the glasses on. 24 applicants received and three candidates after a very thorough process by the entire committee of reviewing the documentations and identifying questions and so forth based on input that we received from students and staff and parents and all of the focus groups that have been held with students and the community to gain input and to gather input. We interviewed three candidates and at this point, no one has been moved forward to my office. We met today to finalize the next cycle of the search process and we're looking at casting a wider net. We have our human resource director looking at NASSP, which is the National Association of School, Secondary School Principals, as well as MAS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. And we will be advertising beyond just the normal school spring. At this point, we feel to absolutely make sure that we've reached out to every possible venue through advertising that we need to expand beyond school spring. This is an incredibly important position and we want to make sure that we do our due diligence. So we anticipate beginning interviews again from the second round of applications the second week in May. We do have two students on our committee and they have told us that the week before that is AP testing and that can't be moved. So we want them to continue in the process. They've been outstanding participants. And I know Joan, you, you've served on the committee as the school committee rep as well. So more updates to come. We continue and as Greg does as well, to reassure everyone that we're not just checking a box, we're finding the best next principal of Elgonquin Regional High School. Tom still has a chance to withdraw his retirement at this point for sure, but we're going to move forward together. Okay? Greg, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Senator.
Okay. Next item under new businesses, the Washington inaugural trip and update.
Well, we have something very special this evening. Last month, we were unable to hear their presentation, so we thought that we would launch something new, virtual school committee presentations. And so while they were here, we taped them. And they were just back from the inauguration and one of the things that the school committee was looking forward to was having their presentation. So rather than have them back this evening because they have many, many things to do, we taped the presentation and there's our very own emcee, Mr. Mead, ready to, to launch this presentation. And so they're here in spirit and on the screen, not necessarily in person tonight. And thank you, Terry, for being willing to participate in that first time attempt.
We're here at the Elgonquin Regional High School Library and we've been talking with a group of students and their teacher who went off to the inauguration this year, inauguration of Donald Trump as president of the United States. So I'm going to turn this over now to their teacher, Gina Johnston, who will talk about the trip, the, how it began, how it started, and then we'll hear from the students themselves who will talk about their experiences. Gina?
Firstly, thank you, Mr. Mead, for allowing us to go on the trip and thank Superintendent Johnson for the paperwork help and Superintendent, Mr. Martino, because there's a lot of paperwork and I wish I'd thank you for all of your support. We traveled with the tour company, World strides, and they were amazing. And so I just want to give them a shout out because without them, I mean, the tour wouldn't have been as smooth. But we left on Thursday at 2:30 in the morning, yeah, for our 6:00 AM flight and we stayed until Sunday night. I think we had a nine o'clock flight back. So we had a jam-packed, filled weekend of inauguration and just everything that's great about DC. The kids will tell you more. Here's Ethan.
Yeah, so I mean, there was a lot to like about this trip. The only thing that I kind of wished was that it was longer. I mean, we could have had a lot more time to spend in each exhibit, each event, each museum and it was a little rushed each time we were in there, but that's all right. We still got a lot to see and I think that was one of my favorite parts, just the versatility of it all, being able to see every little aspect of DC and what it has to offer. Probably my favorite place to go see, as I mentioned earlier, was the Holocaust Museum. Had a lot of different things, different objects. I've learned about the event before, but this had a lot of things I'd never heard of and that was really emotionally interesting to learn about. So here's Michelle, if she has any more to say.
Hello. Yes, I had a really great time on this trip. Two of my favorite places were the National Archives. That was very interesting because actually we were able to see the Declaration of Independence and then in my history class this semester with Ms. Johnston, we watched a movie about the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So it was really great to be able to see some of the articles in person. And I also really liked the Air and Space Museum. I had a really great time on the whole trip and I wanted to thank the school committee for approving our trip. And I definitely think it would be worthwhile in the next four years to approve our trip. And Mrs. Connor?
Hi, I'm Connor and I really enjoyed the trip too. It was really great and our tour guide, he was like an encyclopedia of knowledge. Like he just knew all the little details about each and every memorial and like all the history behind it and meetings. And I also feel like it also helped develop some skills, like being aware of like being groups of people and stuff. And there's just so much history and knowledge in that city that I just wish that there was more time to it. And yeah.
That was a wonderful way to see a presentation, except we can't ask them any questions afterwards or.
We'll have to add a link for write-in questions or something to continue the experience, but it was kind of a neat way to have a presentation.
It was, it really was.
Good to know it works for future reference, right?
But they went to the inauguration.
They didn't.
They managed to fit that into the schedule.
That wasn't their favorite thing.
Tom, I'm trying to remember what they said about the crowds. I mean, I think they, they felt it was quite safe and respectful, right? And they got pretty close. You know, we asked them some questions, but it didn't end up on camera.
Yeah, no, I think some of the news reports leading up to the inauguration were perhaps a little worrisome, but I think their experience was exactly the opposite of that. I think they had a great experience and I think, as Gina was saying, I think they really appreciated the guidance of the tour company in helping them to figure it out and to get around the city and, and see a lot of the different things. So, oh, no, a good trip.
How many went?
Six, I think.
Six.
I think.
Okay. Thank you. Wonderful opportunity for the kids and for the teacher.
Eight, it was.
Next, we have the superintendent's report to the committee, principal's report.
I do have the colored copies, Tom. I did promise.
Bring it. Bring it. Principal's report, you like.
Well, why don't you start and I'll find them.
I do have a few extras here. They're not colored, but.
I did do a colored one.
Oh, thank you. I can distribute.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much, guys. Oh, this is a updated version.
It's an updated version, yeah.
Public consumption, I think they might have taken them.
Hot item.
Hot item. Off the counter and ah, there we have it. Full color is comes to life.
You already have them. You have them now.
I, I had three colors, so we're, we're all colored up on this side, I guess. Thank you.
We're all set.
Great. Oh, they were just here.
Okay, a few highlights of our, of our report here. We're starting off with DECA states because deservedly so. That's a very large event here at the school. 114 students, give or take, participated in the DECA states. That was just this past weekend in Boston. And you can see the theme there, dream, design, and then dominate. And our students did do very well. In some cases, they might have dominated. They had 10 firsts, seven seconds, one third, four fourths, and five fifths in their categories, which is amazing when you think about the categories as being between 30 and 50 competitors in each category. So the fact that our students rose so high in so many different categories is a credit to our staff, our advisors, and the whole entourage that went down there that encoded some very fine chaperones on our parent's side of things. So it was, I visited with them, snuck into the Hines Convention Center under cover of darkness and saw some of this, in fact, that's my picture up there in the upper left. That's Mrs. Ash, actually, who's one of our chaperones. And then on the screen behind her is, you can see the double jumbo trons on either side of the actual lives stage there. On that stage is Jennifer Fox and she's getting her first place award for her category for DECA. So anyway, you'd need a better visual on that, but I'm sorry about that. Let's talk about some other things, though. The report has the Biology Olympiad. We have a new club, USABO, USA Biology Olympiad Club at Elgonquin, established and started up last year. Alyssa Drake, she teaches biology at the school and she is working with those students. They now have seven members. They're all about competing in a way, so she gets them ready for what is called the Biology Olympiad. There's some news also in this report about the math team. The math team has been having a very good year. Great thanks to Brian Kalman, who is their advisor. He's also a math teacher, obviously, here at Elgonquin. They're doing very well. In fact, they just competed at the second and third levels of the nationwide math competition and we are sending, I believe, one of our representatives to the final round of that, which I believe is in Washington, DC. So great, great success on the academic front, especially in terms of the clubs that are associated with our curriculum. Performances, we, Amy mentioned this, we hosted the Massachusetts Jazz Ensemble. Our students went to the UNH Jazz Festival, in both instances won awards for their great skills. In the report, we talk about the Model UN. That happened last weekend and our students did very well there. There's three award winners that are featured. We have a student that won an award for writing a poem, Jana Wright, and we had a student recognized for reciting two poems. That's Kara Hayden. She went as a finalist to the Old South Meeting House in Boston and competed at the state level with 24 other students there. There's a little story about her in my report. There's a bigger story in the Harbinger. So if you want to look up Kara and the Harbinger and her experiences at the Poetry Out Loud Contest, please do. Awards are also noted in this report. The Harbinger and Satchim both won awards. Harbinger won an award for Massachusetts, as you can see there. And there's another picture of the award winners. Photo editor, Raffiello Coelho, and our co-editor in chief, Rhea Pujari, and our coarts, and entertainment editor, Maggie Del Rey, were all recipients and represented the Harbinger for those awards. The big award is the, the award that Rhea is holding there and that is the general news category, which includes everything and anything that comes out of a school newspaper. We won that award, that recognition, I think, that we also achieved at the Columbia Press Awards. Incidentally, the bus left yesterday for New York City to take our Satchim and our Harbinger staffs, as many as could go, to New York to go to the workshops. And of late, in the last two or three years, our students and our advisors have also been giving workshops at that particular affair. So we're, we're very well represented and we're very well recognized for excellence in reporting and communicating in all different ways, including what the heck, Twitter and also online, everywhere the students and the staff of Elgonquin go, so goes the Harbinger. Best Buddies is mentioned here. They had their friendship ball back in late February. What's interesting about that and which is so telling about our, our particular chapters is that there were six other chapters from the local area that were invited to that ball. That's typical of the way we operate here. We like to share things with other, other groups, other school organizations, and other chapters of, of different academic or social organizations. And we certainly do that. That's under the direction of Kevin Hausman and Caitlin Hines, who are co-advisors to the Best Buddies organization. That's about it. I was joined and she had to go. This was Jessie Yin. She's a member of our SAC, our Student Advisory Committee. She's a junior. She'll be probably sitting at the table here next year as the student representative. Jessie, it's good not to be here because I can talk about here a little bit without embarrassing her, but she is a fabulous student. As, as I mentioned, she's a member of SAC. She also is a member of the UNICEF Club and the UNICEF Club did a coat drive this year and was overwhelmed by the number of students and staff who participated and gave up winter coats and winter outerwear that was taken into some of the Worcester social agencies that used it and they were just floored by the fact that they had so many different clothing items that they could share with the people of their, their client organizations and that sort of thing. So Jessie was a big part of that. This week, our robotics go to Rhode Island for a competition at Bryant University. Our Science Olympiad goes to FSU, not Florida State University, but Framingham. Previously, though, they've been to MIT and they've competed very well in both places. And of course, as the entourage said, we have our drama classes giving their annual performance in the Black Box Theater starting tomorrow night, Friday night, and Saturday night. Their unique approach to drama in the way of improvisational magic. And you probably caught a little bit of the interplay between the two students there. Interesting, I, I got to meet Dan Bacallo this year when he stopped me in the hallway and said, "Mr. Mead, everybody should take Silenced Voices by Emily Philbin," the course that she designed, created, and came up with about three or four years ago. And that's a very common refrain that I hear from students who take Emily's course, but wouldn't you know, it was a drama student that had to tell me that in the hallway. But that's how I got to know Dan. You know, this is just a measure of the outwardness of our students. I was out to dinner at a restaurant in Marlboro, Fish Restaurant. It was, you know, got to have some seafood every now and then, right, Greg? And Michelle Tremblay was sitting with her family at another table. She came over, introduced herself to my people and talked to them about what she's doing at Elgonquin. She left and she said, "Where did that young lady come from?" At any rate, I think so many of our programs give our students so much confidence in what they're doing. They get to really fulfill their, their passions and their interests in so many different ways. March is a marvelous month for all of that because so many of them are competing or demonstrating or showing or doing something that is the fruition, is the. demonstrating, or showing, or doing something, um, that is the fruition, is the ultimate, um, presentation that they're going to make. So, it's, it's kind of exciting, um, whether or without snow days. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for the great report. Any questions, comments? Okay, next item, uh, is the FY seventeen Monthly General Fund Expenditures Report. Paul?
I, I move that we vote to approve the General Fund Expenditure Report until it's audited.
Second. Second by Lynn. Any further discussion questions? All those in favor of the motion on the table? It passes to you, Ms.
Before we move on to the revenue report, I just, you know, after such an amazing, uh, presentation this night, but, tonight by our staff and our students and Tom's principal report each and every month, I think, you know, the, the approval of the budget becomes sort of a, just a matter of process, and it's something that we do at each of our meetings, and it's very important. But I think, you know, particularly tonight, to take pause and realize that the process of approving the bu- the budget is really a financial reality, but what it does is all of what we just heard tonight, is really support all of the excellence in all of the areas that are part of the richness that is Algonquin Regional High School. So, it's just nice to take a pause for a moment from the procedural piece and realize that this is what the budget supports. And with that, we do need a vote to approve until audited the revenue report.
Paul?
So, I would move that we vote to approve the revenue report until it's audited.
Second. Second by Lynn. All those in...
I do have one question, if I could, on that. Athletic receipts, only seventy-three percent collected from plan. I mean, the, I don't think there's a lot of opportunity to pull a lot more gate receipts.
It will be, right, not too many more gate receipts unless they were, yeah, yeah, but it'd be the user fees for, for the spring.
Okay. And that would, that would show up in here? Okay.
Any, any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion on the table? And it passes to you, Ms. Thank you.
Uh, the budget priorities are in your calendar. We made reference to those, uh, earlier during the public hearing. The budget calendar, we have had two very important meetings since the last time we met, and that was the, uh, meeting with the Northborough Appropriations, um, and the Southborough Financial Advisory. Both went extremely well. We thank everyone who attended. Mr. Mead, uh, was at both, and, uh, members of the school committee for being present. Lynn, Joan, I know you were there as well. So, um, we're moving forward to town meeting, which again, uh, just as a reminder, is, uh, April twenty-fifth, uh, fourth for Northborough, and a change in Southborough, April twenty-fifth. Uh, we will post for a six PM meeting before each town meeting. And the enrollments are in your packet. As always, no significant changes to report at this time, but we are ever watchful of those numbers. And the copy of the, um, FY eighteen School Committee Budget that was approved last month, uh, actually on February twenty-third, is also in your packet for distribution.
And were there any comments or questions on the budget public hearing for the school committee members? Paul?
So, I, I just have one, and, and kind of piggybacking on what, what Christine said. I mean, this is a, this is a terrific school system that we're running here, and it costs a lot of money. There's more that we could have been doing, but this budget, again, we've talked about this a little bit with the committee before, this is nothing but a maintenance budget. We're not adding really any, any services of any, you know, of any materiality in, into this budget, even though we really wanted to, but, you know, just because of kind of the cost and how the, how the numbers were working out, we felt like, you know, in the best interests of the, the towns and the finances and the guidance that we got from the two advisory and financial, uh, oversight groups from the towns, that we had to keep it the way we kept it. So, it's a little unfortunate that we couldn't have done a little more. We need to be vigilant with opportunities to try to do more, but, boy, in the meantime, Tom, you do great things with what we give you. This, this, this has been a wonderful set of reports tonight, so, going out on a really high note, pal.
Lynn?
I'd, um, just like to add also that, you know, even like it is, um, you know, a maintenance budget, but, you know, as we hear from the various, um, departments, uh, you know, every couple of months or so, they, you know, they able to, you know, change their curriculum up, or, you know, add electives here, electives there, so, with the resources that, that they're given, and, uh, like we heard tonight about the new, um, programs for beginners, um, piano and, and guitars, just, you know, so the faculty is doing a great job of, um, being creative and innovative and coming up with new, um, opportunities of electives for the students.
Any other comments? I'd also say, Tom, I think that everything that you heard, even as an educator, you think, "Well, if I can reach one kid this year, I'll be a success." And I just think that what you heard tonight, there were so many students, they attributed to what they were doing from the teachers and from the electives that were given to them, and, and how it helped them to be more rounded. And, you know, they made those decisions on their own, but it just made them to be better human beings in society. And it was also very heartwarming to see Amy when she was standing there, when the kids were performing, you could see the smile on her face, as if they were her own. And they are, you know, during the day, she probably spends more time with them. But just the heartwarming stories that were coming from these kids, and just what they were saying, and again, I'll rean- reiterate what they said about the teachers. You know, that they were so appreciative, they wanted us to understand that. And thanks to the budget and even administration for the times that you have worked to get that budget, and I think that it goes from the top down, and I think that they saw that the administration has been there for the kids, and I think they feel warm and welcome here. And, you know, even though even s- something so simple as a filter going to the inauguration, but it's also by what the school committee members have done, by looking at, you know, the approval of that and making sure that everything was always presented. I know Paul's played an important part on that, making sure that everything was there, because we want to make sure that these kids are safe when they go out of our environments here, Northborough and Southborough. So, it does take a village to raise a kid, and, boy, if I tell you, you guys are doing phenomenal, and your staff and administration with the constraints of the budgets that we have. They're doing, it's, it's fantastic, it really is. So, please give our accolades to everyone who is associated, and Christine, to you and your staff, from everybody putting these budgets together, and even something so simple as ranging the meetings and getting there and getting us there, too. So, and the due polls. So, thank you, thank you so much, Tom. And as I will repeat what Paul said, you're going out on a high note. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, as, as, as others have said before me, but, um, it's great to have the support of the community. Um, it's great to have the support, uh, of a very knowledgeable school committee. And, um, I, I think you, you get a, a sense here that, um, these students belong to something. It's Algonquin, but it's a world within Algonquin, too. And, uh, part of what, uh, we've tried to do is, is create a lot of opportunities for kids to be affiliated with their school and to feel a part of something. And, uh, I think you got, you've picked up on that, um, tonight, um, because there's a lot of tribes here at Algonquin, um, that have, um, very, very, very strong bonds, and that, that helps to cut a large school down to size and give them, um, an intimate, um, experience here, um, which is very, very helpful to them.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, going on to old business, there's none at this time, uh, policy development. We have the distribution of the revised policy I-100 on the school calendar. And now on to audience sharing. Any audience members that would love to share?
No.
Okay. Uh, committee members, anybody have something they'd like to share? Um, I have one, just one question for Tom. Tom, if we attend the Black Theater, do we, for the improv, do we just go through the main office area to get to the Black Theater, or what's the best way to get there? To the evening?
The Black Box.
The Black Box.
The Black Box. Um, for the performances?
Mm-hmm.
Um, either the, um, uh, lower school entrance is one way in, and the other is right at the theater door, if you go around the backside, actually, mm, right over here.
Oh, right there, okay.
Right over here, at this parking lot here, um, will, leads right into the lobby area of the Black Box Theater, and you're there.
Okay.
I went to last year's, it was fabulous.
Was it?
It was a blast. Yeah, it was good.
Speak my interest.
Maybe I'll do that tomorrow night, so we're doing taxes.
Yes, that'd be much more enjoyable. Patty?
I thought, I thought tomorrow night was unscheduled, so it'll be in a, a nice unscheduled event that people who are unscheduled, perhaps they could attend with their families.
They could, yes, yes. It's unscripted, too, because it's improvisational.
Oh, that's the perfect combination.
Right, so they don't have to study their lines.
Okay, uh, personnel, there's distribution of the personnel report that was in our packets.
Madam Chair, I do have an update, um, to that as well, which I think because, um, the Harbinger picked it up on Twitter, Tom mentioned that early, I was, uh, contacted because the Harbinger was out there, and I, uh, actually found out that they moved faster than one call, because by the time I delayed, it was already out on Harbinger, and the phone hadn't nev- haven't even rung in the households at, at that point yet. So, they are quick on their feet. Um, on Monday, Mel Lawton announced to the staff here at Algonquin that, um, he would be retiring. Uh, Mel has been an ever-positive, familiar, and very consistent president in our district since nineteen ninety-four. Throughout his time at Algonquin, Mel has demonstrated a genuine interest in our students and commitment to our school district, whether in his role as tutor way back when, teacher, or as an educational leader. Um, his commitment has been unwavering. He will retire, having made a significant difference in the lives of our students, faculty, and school community. I would ask that we all join, um, in sending words of appreciation and joy as he embraces whatever opportunities may follow Algonquin Regional High School. Now, Tom, I don't know if you...
Pretty much sums it up, but I know you've had a chance to work with him so many years while you've actually served as principal here as well.
No, uh, positively, uh, it's been, it's been great, great, uh, working with Mel. I came in, um, without, uh, any real knowledge of things, and, uh, Mel was very, very helpful among, of just a few people in sort of, uh, taking me under his wing, so to speak, which is enormous, and, uh, um, and helping me out. And, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with him. Um, he's always, um, put the students first. He's always, um, tempered his, um, work as a, as a disciplinarian with, um, a, a very, very, um, warm and compassionate tone to, uh, his work and his words. So, um, I know, uh, he'll be missed, but, um, he's vastly appreciated, um, and he's, he's finishing strong. He's, um, he's been Mel Lawton, uh, one last semester here, so we're certainly getting a kick out of that.
He was a presence here for many years, and Mel was, and he will certainly be missed. I, when I got the note today saying that he had retired, I knew he had formed a pretty strong bond with one of my kids who graduated from here a long time ago, and I called him to say, you know, "I just heard that, that Mel had retired," and he said, "Oh, yeah, I knew that." I mean, the word about his retirement spread, not just through campus, I mean, through the extended campus and that, you know, that whole kind of family that has gone back for years now, that was, uh, it was telling, I thought. He's a good guy.
And he's still working, strong, as you say, until the end. I mean, he's working on the, with Greg, under Greg's leadership, for the principal search.
Right.
So, I've had the pleasure of working with him in that small group, but I think even, uh, what Paul said is that even if we're in the meetings, if he sees a student or something has to take care of, he just does it, and he just has a great warmth and rapport with all the kids. So, he's been a vital part of Algonquin.
He also represents us very well. He's our representative for quarter nine, um, has been for years. Uh, he also has represented us to the Metro West Health Organization and helped coordinate the, uh, the biannual survey that we do with our students. So, um, I rely on him for that, and, uh, he's, he's been very, very, very consistent and very, um, gracious in all of that work.
He'll be sorely missed, definitely. Okay. Uh, communications inside of your packets is the district doings, March of two thousand seventeen. And Cheryl, I guess we do have pay, bills and payrolls to be signed by members before they leave. Um, agenda items for next month is class rank presentation. And any other items? Patty?
And I was gonna mention the, uh, the treasurer's, if you expect the treasurer. And included with the treasurer, I don't think, I, I don't think it needs to be, unless the chair feels it needs to be a separate agenda item, but I would, um, like to share some thoughts about OPEV.
And that's for the next meeting, right? Okay. Class rank, the treasurer for town, and was that town meeting update?
Mm-hmm. Actually, we meet this, this year after both town meetings because of April vacation, and the way the calendar fell, usually we meet once more before the vacation and so forth. Uh, and with both town meetings being after April vacation, the next time we meet, our budgets will have been approved. So, I'm positive.
So, we'll have a busy three days there in April. And then, um, on the back of the agenda, if you remember from what Mary, Mary Beth was talking about, uh, we had the next combined school committee, uh, meeting of June twenty-first, but there will be one in May. So, we can add that on.
Tom, I think we might have a presentation besides, we'll have to look, but there might be another, uh, department presentation, but what do you intend to be, uh, might be world language?
Yeah, there is one more, at least, yeah.
We'll have a lot to come from that night.
Okay, uh, so at this time, there is no need for a separate session, so Paul?
So, I move that we adjourn, uh, tonight's, uh, open meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee.
Second. Second by Lynn. All those in favor of the motion on the table? And it's you, Ms., and we will close for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.